Item I, I moved to transfer from free cash the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of upgrading the generator at Situate High School. Item J, I moved to borrow the sum of $135,000 for the purpose of purchasing a new dump truck for the Highway Department to further authorize a treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow said sum. Item K, I moved to transfer from free cash the sum of $35,000 for the purpose of building, building ventilation repairs at Town Hall. Item L, I moved to transfer from free cash the sum of $80,000 for the purpose of acquiring a loader for the Public Grounds Department. Item M, I moved to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 for the purpose of complying with an EPA unfunded mandate required municipalities to map and sample discharge points throughout the town as part of its compliance with our National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit, which is MS4 compliance. Item N, I moved to transfer from free cash the sum of $44,000 for the purpose of a two-ton roller for the Highway Department. Item O, I moved to transfer from free cash the sum of $200,000 for the purpose of relocating the Early Childhood Center in the School Department. Item P, I moved to transfer from free cash the sum of $30,926 and said sum of $2,074 of the interest from the Stabilization Fund for the purpose of rebuilding the playground stairs at Jenkins School. Item Q, I moved to transfer from free cash the sum of $40,000 for the purpose of replacing the deputy chief's fire command vehicle in the Situate Fire Department. Item R, I moved to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 and to borrow the, borrow the sum of $200,000 for the purpose of funding Phase One of a three-phase program to expand school technology in the School Department, further authorize the treasurer with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow said sum. Item S, I moved to transfer free cash the sum of $50,000 for the purpose of conducting initial work to expand the Cudworth Cemetery. Item T, I moved to transfer from free cash the sum of $65,000 for the purpose of replacing carpeting in various schools for the school, Situate School Department. Item U, I moved to raise and appropriate $163,776 to the Capital Stabilization Fund to offset future debt. Item V, I moved to transfer the sum of $60,000 from the Waterways retained earnings for the purpose of requiring a maritime vessel to replace a 1981 Whaler for the Harbor Masters Department. Item W, I moved to transfer from Water retained earnings the sum of $75,000 for repair and maintenance of stand pipes for the Water Department. Item X, I moved to transfer from Water retained earnings the sum of $162,000 to maintain the town's water meter replacement program. I moved to tran, oh, item V, uh, Y, I moved to transfer from Water retained earnings the sum of $30,000 for the purpose of requiring, acquiring a vehicle to replace vehicle number 31 in the Water Department. Item Z, I moved to transfer from Water retained earnings the sum of $50,000 for the purpose of replacing the generators at some of our town wells. Item A, A, I moved to transfer from Transfer Station retained earnings the sum of $55,000 for the purpose of, of acquiring a refuse truck for trash removal and debris. Item B, B, I moved to transfer from Sewer retained earnings the sum of $200,000 to maintain the town's infiltration slash inflow program. And finally, C, C, I moved to borrow the sum of $400,000 for the purpose of undertaking engineering and design services for the sewer phase four and to further authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow said sum.
Seconding Mr. Danahue, very nice job, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Let me tell you what we're gonna do with this. We have presentations from some of the town officials as to why they believe this equipment is necessary, so we'll do that, and at the close of the presentations, I will call off A through C, C. If you wish to discuss any of these items further, all you need do at that time is say "hold," and then we will return and discuss any particular held item, and we will then vote everything that wasn't held and return back to the held items. So, for presentation, I believe Chairman Harris, I think you're back at the mic.
There's a very detailed description of all these items in the Advisory Committee Handbook.
From the Advisory Committee. Vice Chairman Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The capital improvements plan is a multi-year fiscal year planning process that identifies long-term improvements to the town's infrastructure and facilities as well as in our schools. According to Section 6-6 of a Town Charter, the program shall consist of expenditures for at least the next five fiscal years. A capital project is defined as a major non-routine expenditure for new construction, major equipment purchases, or improvements to existing buildings, facilities, land, or infrastructure with an estimated useful life of five years or more and a cost of $25,000 or more. This year's initial submissions from all departments totaled $70,909,000. The capital plan is being funded from the following resources: free cash, $1,030,176; taxation with a general fund, $663,776; retained earnings, $632,000; stabilization interest, $2,074; and through borrowing, $1,643,000. The Advisory Committee recommends unanimous approval of this motion.
Thank you. Chairman Capel of the Capital Planning Committee, would you like to say any, anything to the meeting?
The Capital Planning Committee consists of five members, Frank Nash, Tony Maschini, Chris Karshia, and Jack Whitaker, and myself. We spent the last four months going through all the requests, as you heard, $70 million in requests. The capital plan looks out five years. We have over $150 million in requests for the next five-year plans, and we take this year's FY14 fiscal year, $70 million in requests, and it was down to a little over $3 million. With that, we approved all of the, voted unanimously on all the articles which Selectman Harris presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I'll do, member, right now, members, is that if you turn over to page 21 of your Advisory Board booklet, you'll see a list of the capital items. And I'll call off each item. If you wish further discussion on the item, please say "hold." You don't need to go to a mic, just say it in a loud voice so I can hear it. We will vote on everything that wasn't held, and then we'll go back and discuss anything that's held. So, here we go. Integrated financial software. Radio communications replacement. Roadway improvements. Acquired handicapped access van. Foreshore protection. Voting machines. Hold on voting machines. GIS permitting software, Phase Two. Zoll monitor defibrillator. Upgrade S Situate High School generator. Replace 1983 dump truck. Now, I was on the board of selectmen when we bought that. I can't believe it's broken down already. Building ventilation Town Hall. Hold for building ventilation. John Deere loader, replacement. Hold for John Deere. MS4 compliance. Two-ton roller. Relocation of Early Childhood Center. Hold. Playground stairs, Jenkins School. Command vehicle deputy. School technology, Phase One of Three. Hold on school technology. Cudworth Cemetery expansion. Hold. Carpeting various schools. Hold the carpeting. Capital stabilization. Replace 1981 Whaler. Stand pipe repair and maintenance. Meter replacement program. Replace number 31 2002 Chevy. Generator or wells. Acquire refuse truck. Inflow and infiltration. Engineering sewer Phase Four. Was there a hold on that? Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna read off the ones that were held, and then we're gonna proceed to approve the motions that Selectman Harris read for all the non-held items. Held are integrated financial software, foreshore protection, voting machines, building ventilation Town Hall, John Deere, relocation of Early Childhood Center, school technology, Cudworth Cemetery expansion, carpeting various schools, capital stabilization, engineering, sewer Phase Four. I'll accept a motion to approve all unheld items. It's been moved and seconded. Passage of that motion will require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. So voted and declared unanimous. So voted and declared unanimous. So, what we will do now is we will return to the held items, and if the person who put the, each person who put a "hold" on an item, if they could just come to the mic and explain their concern. Gentlemen, gentlemen at the center, Mike.
Gordon Price, 48 Manlock Road. Just clarification, I did read the description here on page 22. Does this software upgrade basically pertain to all Town Departments?
Madam Financial Director.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It does. It pertains to Town Departments and School Department as involving all of our financial management, including tax collections, utility billing, general ledger, accounts payable, fixed assets, budgeting, and payroll.
Thank you. I've got the next one, too, so. Oh, okay. All right, well, we'll let Dr. Price wait one minute. There being no other discussion on Item A, integrated financial software, I'll, there is a motion on the floor already. I moved to transfer from free cash the sum of $200,000 and to borrow the sum of $200,000. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Dr. Price.
Having seen the John Deere locator in many areas around Town over the years, just curious, are we getting a trade-in on it at all? Is there any value in a trade-in?
Oh, you crafty devil. You jumped over foreshore protection and voting machines. That's all right. We'll do John Deere. Never let a man, never get between a man and his John Deere. I think that's what the commercial says. Chairman Harris.
Dr. Price, if we don't trade it in, it'll be auctioned off. All right? Usually when...
I'll buy it.
Excuse me? Usually, usually when, you know, the town's done with the equipment, there is not a lot of life left in it, but there'll, you know, there'd be some value, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, there's already a motion on the floor for the John Deere. All those in favor signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. So, now what we're gonna do is we're gonna go back to foreshore protection, which was held.
My name is William Ludlow, 241 Country Way.
Sir.
Question on capital equipment for foreshore. Can somebody explain to me what capital equipment is involved in this item?
Chairman Harris.
I don't believe it's capital equipment. There might be a typo.
Okay, capital improvement. What, what are we, what capital are we improving?
I don't know if I understand your question. What we're talking about is capital funds for foreshore protection.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Madam Town Administrator, do you have a standard definition as to what falls under the category of capital improvement as opposed to just routine operating expense? Sorry to put you on the spot. The Town Administrator, to answer a question.
Good evening. We, we refer to anything that involves coastal defenses and coastal repair, improvements, enhancements, expansion, as foreshore protection as a catch-all. What specifically those generally refer to is what we say are revetments, burns, seawalls, and other ocean controls. So, it's a catch-all, so we have flexibility in using the funds that we allocate for coastal protection.
Thank you. Is it fair to assume that we had a similar item on last year's budget?
Madam Administrator.
For sure?
Yes. Actually, I believe this is the third or fourth year that the capital plan has allocated funds in the same manner for foreshore protection.
Okay, and am I incorrect in assuming that we just passed an expenditure in excess of $400,000 to cover the costs of the blizzard of January? And was that in addition to the foreshore protection in this overall umbrella we're talking about here?
Yes, sir.
So, are we, are we, are we not planning to have more storms this year? The reason I'm asking this, I see we get ourselves into a situation where we're paying hundreds of thousand dollars for bills already committed to. And it seems to me that if we have a record, and we seem to have it every year, if we're paying upwards of $400,000 from last year for money we didn't budget, wouldn't it be more, a little more, I don't want to, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, shouldn't we anticipate that we're gonna have some storms this year and next year and the following year and the year after that, and maybe plan a greater expenditure, since we're not even talking about seawalls yet? I think, I think it's very understated. And that's just a comment. I don't need an answer, it's just an opinion. Thank you for your attention.
Gentlemen to my right.
Alan Greenberg, 122 Old Oak and Bucket Road.
Sir.
A question with regard to foreshore protection. Increasingly, it's becoming evident that seawalls and alike are short-term solutions. I'd like to know where the Town is in terms of planning for long, long-term foreshore protection.
To answer the question, Selectman Murray.
Some of this will be discussed later tonight, but specifically to your answer, Alan. You're right, we have very short-term needs, however. Seawalls in the past have been important, they're currently important, and they're gonna be important in the future as well. But to get to your point, yes, they're only part of the solution, and albeit an important part. The Town is working hard on a number of different avenues to take a longer-term view. We're trying to hire a coastal resources officer. We've put together several committees to try and take a longer view. We're working with the state, hopefully with the feds, although they're not exactly rolling in the bucks either, to address those exact concerns. We're looking at zoning issues, we're looking at conservation issues, you know, right up your alley, to try to sort of premitigate the situation so we are less susceptible to the longer-term issues that we're gonna be facing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? There being none?
Hello?
Oh, hello. I'm very sorry.
I would just like to follow up on the gentleman that spoke on the other side.
Oh, sure. Tell us who you are.
My name's Krista.
And tell us more.
Okay. I'm curious, the foreshore protection again of, I live on Lighthouse Road in Situate, Mass.
Oh, great. What's your last name, Krista?
Griffin.
Oh, thank you.
Yep. On the foreshore protection, I, my question was, where did the $300,000 number come from? Did it come from an assessment of current needs that needed to be addressed this year, or was it a, where did the number actually come from?
Wow. I can tell you where the board wants it to come from, from borrowing, but how was the number arrived at?
Well, how did you choose that $300,000 is an appropriate number?
Sure. Madam Town Administrator.
Sure, that's an excellent question, 'cause it's a little deceptive, the way the advisory booklet is. The town's total recommendation for foreshore protection for capital is $500,000 this year. $200,000 of it is in the operating budget under Article Six, because we had an override in 2010, and as part of that override, $400,000 was asked for from voters for annual appropriations into foreshore protection and road improvements. So, for the fourth year, the budget has $200,000 in the operating budget for, forshore protection, another 200 for road improvements, and 300 under the capital plan, which you see before you under this line item, for borrowing. So, it's a combination of taxation and borrowing, 300 and 200 respectively, for a total for FY15 recommended of $500,000.
And that $500,000 is based off of an assessment of current needs for the fiscal year, or that's my, my question is, where did the, every time we talk about a seawall, it's X dollars to repair, and I just have the question on, where are we picking the number from?
The number is based on the overall capital plan needs that are submitted by departments in a given year, of which we had $70 million this year, the town's ability to afford it out of both the operating and capital plan, and the financial policies of the town that is smoothing our debt structure so we don't borrow and have peaks and valleys that are predictable from each year. So, we have between about 1.2 and 1.4 million dollars a year that we're borrowing on the general fund, exclusive of the enterprise funds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. Thank you, Madam Town Administrator. Any other discussion? I wish we could have a motion to ban storms, but that probably wouldn't work. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. The next held item was voting machines. Chairman Harris.
Mr. Moderator, I ask that it be "hold" simply because it needs a two-thirds vote.
Ah, thank you. This item was held for procedural purposes. This will require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of voting machines signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Next item, building ventilation Town Hall.
George Kelly, 450 Country Way, Situate.
Mr. Kelly.
My question only is, is there any thought of tearing down the Town Hall, and I don't see $35,000 being spent, by a few air conditioners for 300 apiece or something, but certainly ventilation, there's nobody down in the basement except the antique stuff that's in a separate room. I just don't see $35,000 for the Town Hall, that it has been threatened to be torn down.
To address Mr. Kelly's question.
You know, the building was built in 1960. A lot has changed in, in being in that business. Make-up air is, is just so important. I, I realize that $35,000 is a lot of money, but, you know, we might be in Town Hall for five more years, seven more years, so in the scope of things, I really don't think it's that much money.
Any further discussion? There being none, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, so voted and declared a majority vote. The next item is relocation of Early Childhood Center. Gentlemen at the center, Mike.
Hi, Mark Bissell, 28, Captain Village Field Lane.
Sir.
One question if I might, in the beginning. In the intro here, it talks about 1.643 million in borrowing for this article. If we were to say yes to everything tonight, is that the only debt we're incurring, or are there other articles that are incurring debt as well?
Well, it, I believe as I look at this, it says that it would be from free cash, so it's not a borrowing.
Borrowing for 1.643.
Oh, I see, okay. Madam Finance Director.
No, this is the only borrowing.
Okay, thanks. And then to the Early Childhood Center, it looks like we're not mandated to do it, and I'm curious, if we held off a year, if we understand what we're doing with gates, could we possibly offset this expense for at least a year?
This is a year in which our population is increasing at the high school. The high school is the only school in the district right now with a growing population. Next year, we'll have over 900 students at the high school. We currently have in the mid-800 range. The high school could really take advantage of that early childhood space, and so this is a good opportunity to move the Early Childhood Center when we have room at Wampatack at the moment because of a declining population. It works. This is the year it sort of adds up both ways. The high school takes advantage of the space, the Early Childhood Center moves at this time. Another reason why it's good for it to move right now is because one of the proposals that will eventually come before the Town potentially could be a co-located middle high school here, and that would be right over in the space where Early Childhood is currently located. So, by moving Early Childhood now, that takes one of those obstacles out of the way. It's in the best interest of the Early Childhood Program to move. They're better off in an elementary school, they, they belong in an elementary. The only reason why they were here in the first place was because there was room. Now, the issue of room, they have room at Wampatack, we need the high school space, it's a good time for them to move.
Thank you.
Oh, nope, done. There being no further discussion, approval of this item requires, ah...
Krista Griffin, Lighthouse Road, Situate, Mass.
Speaker to my right.
My question just is on the school line items in general. Earlier in the evening, did we say that how many million is appropriated to the school? It's two-thirds of the budget? And when I look at the line items on capital improvements, there's over another half a million here appropriated to the school budget. Not against schools, I think they're great, and maybe I just don't understand the process, but I'm curious why, with the school budget so large, the capital improvements aren't taken from the school budget and they're not budgeted into the school's budget for improvements every year.
Well, Superintendent, have you got a couple hours?
Sure. These, these capital items are different from operational items. So, there's an operational budget and there's a capital budget. These capital budget items are typically one-time expenditures that we make, such as repairing something, replacing something, or, or adding something we do not have. The, the actual total of the requests that we have before Town Meeting tonight is $663,000. We certainly had more requests than we could fund, but we went through the process like everyone else goes through and had those vetted, and those are the ones that are before you tonight.
And does the school budget have its own discretionary funds that aren't, that they can decide what they want to do with, you know, capital improvement-wise, that could be used for that? Or is it all operational?
Very small items in that, what might be to replace a floor washer or something like that, something that's less than $25,000. The school has a very small line item for those types of capital items, replacing a dishwasher in the cafeteria, that sort of thing. But again, these large capital items, the school but, operational budget cannot absorb these.
Okay.
Excuse me. Any other discussion? There being none? Transfer from free cash requires majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying "aye." All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. The next item is Cudworth Cemetery. No, pardon me, yes, you're right. School technology, Phase One of Three. Superintendent's ready? And speaker to my left.
Frank Sheehan, I'm at 24 Doctors Hill Drive.
Sir.
I'm just curious, on this expenditure, does this mean it's Phase One? So, I assume there's two additional phases. So I assume there's two additional phases? And how much is that expected to be? What do you project those costs to be?
Over the next five years, probably about another 300,000 over the next five. So there's a 300,000 investment in year one, and then we've put forth a five-year plan for spending another, perhaps another 50,000, and then another 150,000 in this five-year plan. So another 300,000 over the next five years.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? There being none. Oh, I have my eye on our speaker to the left.
Beverly Westerveld, 12 Harborview Road.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, what, what is the projector in every classroom project? And the model classroom environment? What are we getting for this money?
The projector in every classroom essentially outfits every single classroom with a projection device. It's a, basically an LCD projector, allows a teacher to project images up on the board. It's a new way of delivering, it's much more interactive, much more engaging for students. We currently have, all of our elementary school classrooms right now have a projector in every classroom. What this plan will do will allow us to put projectors at gates, finish that, and finish the high school as well. And if you're concerned about putting technology into gates with the potential of that building being renovated or built new, that technology can move. All of the technology we'll put into gates will be movable. The model classroom essentially uses a few other tools, technology tools that we're trying out, such as document cameras. All of the elementary classrooms right now have document cameras. We're trying to add some to gates into the high school. There's also a student response system where students are using clickers to respond instantly to teacher questions so that teachers can gauge student understanding. That's also in the model classroom as well. So it's using some of the cutting-edge technology that we have available to make teaching and learning more engaging for students, so that's the purpose behind the plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? This is, includes a borrowing that would require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared a two-thirds vote. Next item, now we come to the cemetery. Uh, nobody, oh, sorry. I, I put my glasses on too quickly, sometimes I miss people. My apologies. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, Robin Laverne, 49, Creelman Drive.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm also the chair of the school building committee, and I was just curious where this piece of land is, because currently, as I understand, across from the Cudworth Cemetery is the Gates building.
I was kind of curious about how the school and the cemetery were going to tie together.
Yeah.
You did it. Chairman Harris.
I was wondering myself, it's across the street, if we're standing looking at the Little Red Schoolhouse to the left. Across the street from the Cudworth Cemetery where it exists now. This, here, there's a patch of woods between the residence and the Little Red Schoolhouse.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the cemetery? This is a transfer for free cash who requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Next item, carpeting various schools. Superintendent's ready for you, so. Uh, I know somebody expressed a fascination for carpeting, so don't be shy. Up, there we go. Ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. My, my name is Karen Desler, I live at 11 Brown Road.
Thank you.
Uh, my question is, is this carpeting being replaced? And what's the main reason for it being replaced? The cost seems a bit exorbitant.
It's a, it's a replacement carpeting, it's a replacement of the carpeting at the Cushing Elementary School in the library, the Hatherley Elementary School in the library. Both of those carpets are probably in the range of about 20 years old, extremely worn. And again, those areas of the school are carpeted in the library to keep the sound down, so that's why we do it there. And then some rooms at the high school where the carpeting is about 12 to 14 years old, it's on the second floor. All of our first floor is tiled, but our second floor classrooms have carpeting because of the noise factor. So this is to replace carpeting that is severely worn at the high school as well.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on school carpeting? There being none, this requires a majority vote, transfer for free cash. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Next item, capital stabilization, future debt. Mr. Harris.
And again, I just held this one as well because it needs a two-thirds vote.
Uh, this was a procedural hold because of the different quantum of vote. All those in favor of the item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. And I believe the last item is engineering sewer, phase four.
Gordon Price, 48, Manlot Road. I'd first of all just like to offer my services, if you'd like to have a pair of glasses that you can see to read and see off in the, in the, in the group, so come down anytime.
You got me there, Gordon. You got me there.
Um, having a fairly short memory going back into the 1990s when sewer phases were discussed, could someone just give us a kind of a brief description of what phase four is and?
What it is, is we're going to have to relook at everything right now because of the areas we've already done. So I think originally, the next phase was supposed to be the tree streets, but what we're going to do is look at engineering to see when we do the next phase, we, where will we get the most bang for our buck? Okay?
Okay. Thank you, look forward to seeing you in the harbor, Mr. Trump. I'll see you soon. Final item on the capital planning list is borrowing. That requires a two-thirds vote. There being no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Now, before we get into Article Six, the budget article, we have a distinguished visitor. I know he was very busy and was able to make it to our meeting. We have Representative Jim Cantwell, sitting up in the gallery. And, and Jim, you're welcome to say a few words if you wish. I'll tell you, there's a man who can gauge the will of the voters. Thank you, Jim. Thank you for coming, we're honored. All right. Article Six, the way we'll handle this is I'll ask Chairman Harris to offer a main motion. I'll get a second, and then we will have some opening remarks from the town administrator, from the superintendent of schools, and then on the customary fashion, I will go through each heading under the budget, ask for holds. We will then vote on everything that was not held, and we will return to discuss any items that were held. Chairman Harris.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raisin appropriate 61,752,667 dollars and transfer from the Gulf Enterprise Fund, the sum of 59,391 dollars. From the wastewater enterprise fund, the sum of 187,777 dollars. From the water department enterprise fund, the sum 257,529 dollars. From the transfer station enterprise fund, the sum of 132,362 dollars. From the waterways enterprise fund, the sum of 55,981 dollars. From Title V assessments, the sum of 6,858 dollars. From debt premium reserve, the sum of 10,576 dollars. From the PEG access cable grant, the sum of 108,383 dollars. And 60,000 dollars from overlay surplus to the general fund. And a sum of 53,931 dollars from the Massachusetts School Building Assistance Reserve totaling 932,788 dollars for the purpose of funding personal services and expenses for the town operations as may be necessary for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2014, as follows.
It's been moved, is there a second? Seconded, Mr. Vignani. I guess what we will do now is ask for the town administrator to give us her presentation to be followed by the superintendent of schools.
Good evening, I'll be brief. I just want to share with you some of the budget highlights. At the beginning of the meeting, we heard from the selectmen and members of the advisory committee, sort of a general overview of the state of the town. My comments are going to be directly related to the operating budget that you vote under Article Six. This is the FY15 operating budget. There's one that's this big for capital that we just did under the previous article. Each department head is required to submit detailed goals and objectives with strategic key result areas to achieve in any given year, and at the end of that fiscal year, they have a merit-based performance evaluation that, on the achievement of those goals. Those goals flow from the goals that are established annually by the Board of Selectment at a retreat, that my goals flow from, and then the departments do. So we have a cohesive strategic plan that's able to be fluid and respond to the needs of the town as things occur. As I mentioned earlier, in addition to four shore protection, the 2010 override on the town side of the budget provided 400,000 for roads and four shore protection, but also substantial funds of about 100,000 to maintain the facilities that we're in now, and also provide ongoing training for staff, as there's so many changes at the state and federal level that trickle down to the local level for us to comply with. We want to make sure our staff has the training that they need. Four out of the five union contracts on the town side have been settled for four years that going through June 30th of 2017. Those annual colars that we already know that provide stability and predictability for the future years are 1.5%, 1.75%, 2% and 2%. All of those with the exception of the one unsettled union have already had those colars and step increases funded in the town side of the budget. The one exception for that union is an allocation of funds that have been made under the line item you see under operating, under 123 Labor Council. There's a set aside, so when eventually that contract is settled, there's a set aside for that. 1% colar on the town side of the staff equals 100,000, just for a frame of reference for folks. Employee benefits, as Mr. Vignani noted earlier, continue to increase. They're 34% of the entire operating budget of the town, a huge fixed cost that we have to deal with each year. Veteran services continue to increase. We're happy to provide these services to our veterans who served our country and their dependents. Four years ago, we had three claims that we were paying. Now we have 21, and we're expecting more in the next several months. So we've carved that new appropriation out of the budget the last several years. One of the things that this budget does for the first time on the town side in a long time is it ha, it contains funding for three positions. One of those is a coastal resources officer to deal with the increase in staff time dealing with coastal issues. This person will be responsible for our coastal rating system that the conservation agent currently handles, that we do for our residents so they can get a discount on their national flood insurance. The other position, the other part of this position will be reimbursed through FEMA, is to assist with our elevation grants that have been handled under the planning department for the last several years. We had three, I believe, the last time we did this program. We have 17 that we expect to be elevated, and this person, 30% of their salary be an offset from FEMA to help administer this program. Most important that I want to stress is that we're experiencing a building boom in the town, as witnessed by the new growth figures we saw in revenue. We have dozens of projects that have started up that have been dormant for several years. Many of you will notice Walden Woods and Starkbridge Woods are now being built. Those were originally 40Bs that were approved several years ago and are now being built. In addition to additions and expansions of residential homes, we have a number of new subdivisions coming in as well. The workload for the planning, conservation and building department in, in these projects is going to be staggering, and as a result, we have to add another full-time inspector to keep up with the work, and that's included in this budget as well. Finally, we continue to expand and increase our collaboration with the school department on a number of items, and I want to thank the school committee and Superintendent McCarthy for really expanding our relationship on the town side to get economies of scales. One of these is in the areas of public facilities maintenance. We created the director of facilities position three years ago. Last year, the school created an assistant director for schools. This budget contains a property maintenance worker position to troubleshoot problems in the buildings. What we found was happening is that our very skilled facilities director and assistant director were spending lots and lots of time crawling under desks, fixing plugs, fixing fuses, and taking away for the bigger project work like the gates feasibility and the public safety building. So this is a very needed position, and we hope to continue to collaborate on that shared facilities department. There's one other thing in this budget that I want to speak about, and that is that there's almost 100,000 recommended for the Economic Development Commission to do a number of initiatives to look at reducing our dependency on the residential tax rate. There was a lot of discussion, you recall, at our town meeting last year. The EDC should be commended for coming to us this year with a very thoughtful number of initiatives that are tied to a new plan that was recommended by MAPC, a multi-phase plan, and allow them to implement some of those phases. And finally, most important is we have a continuing goal, an important goal, to be upfront on technology. We didn't even have someone dealing with technology four years ago, and right now in Massachusetts, we're one of the leading communities in terms of things we're doing with technology, and will be enhanced by the financial integration system that we just approved under the earlier article. We want to make sure we have applications available. We want to have people be able to pay their bills online. We want them to have Wi-Fi access in the harbor and other areas, and we want them to be able to look at any parcel in the town through our GIS monitoring system. We want to automate payroll, and we want people to use our website and get one-stop shopping. We're not there yet, it's a continuing goal, and it will continue to be a continuing goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing me to address town meeting this evening. We worked very closely with the advisory committee this year in preparing this budget and ensuring that the advisory committee, the Board of Selectment and the town meeting had all the information available to you to make decisions around the school budget. As you well know, the school budget is the largest budget in town, and so we want to ensure a town meeting that we are spending this money wisely. The increase in the FY15 operating budget for the schools is 1,393,085. That's an increase of 4.4% over last year. When you combine that with last year's increase of 4.2%, the Situate Public Schools have successfully recovered from the 2008 to 2013 recession that saw us lose lots of teaching positions, saw class sizes increase, and valuable educational services cut. I can proudly say to you tonight that we have recovered from that recession. Our class sizes are at the lowest point they've been in in years. Our elementary class sizes right now average 20 or less. When I arrived two years ago, we had class sizes in the elementary grades that approached 30. Keeping class sizes small in the elementary grades is where you get your greatest boost in achievement. So we have accomplished that in two short years. The majority of this 1.3 million dollar increase will go to contractual obligations that we have. We are entering the third and final year of the, our negotiated increases with our unions. The negotiated increase for next year for all six of our unions is 1.5% cost of living adjustment. When you add that with step increases of teachers who are not necessarily on top step, as well as any salary adjustments due to level changes because of educational advancement, the overall increase in negotiated raises is about 1.1 of the 1.3 million dollars. The remaining 200,000, when combined with some additional funds from some retirement The remaining $200,000, when combined with some additional funds from some retirements that we have, we're going to put towards a few new positions. What we're looking to do is add 1.2 teachers to the high school. The high school is the only school right now in our district that is experiencing an enrollment increase. As I said earlier, the high school enrollment will be over 900 next year, and it will continue to grow over the next several years, while the elementary schools decrease in enrollment. The, the high school will be increasing. So we're looking for an additional 1.2. It's actually an increase of an English teacher from .8 to full-time, as well as a brand-new social studies history teacher. We're also looking to add four special education teachers to the elementary schools. We have started an effort of co-teaching. Co-teaching is a research-based instructional practice that puts a special educator in the classroom or the regular educator to address the needs of all children, not just children with special needs. So not only do you get a better overall education for all children at the elementary levels, but it also helps to keep your special education referrals and numbers down. I can proudly say that right now, we're projecting for next year only a 1.6% increase in out-of-district special education costs. That's one of the lowest increases we've seen in Situate in many years. The reason for that is because we're a- able to educate more of our children in district, as opposed to have to send them out of district. We are also looking to reinstate the position of library media specialist at the Gates Intermediate School. That position has not been at Gates for several years, and a lot of you are probably wondering why a librarian in this day and age. A library media specialist, the position has changed significantly over the last 10 years. It in, this now technology-rich, information-driven age, and where students are doing a lot of research, particularly using the internet, a library media specialist is a valuable resource for our students. We have one at the high school. We are now gonna add one back to Gates. This is a position we lost several years ago. And finally, we're looking to add a school resource officer, full-time during the school year, to our staff. This will be a Situate police officer, it will not be one of our staff members, they will report to the chief of police, they will not report to the school department. The school department is funding this position to ensure that the position is in the schools for 180 days. We have worked very carefully with Chief Stewart and the town administrator to ensure we can fund this position and make it work. And again, we are one of the only school systems on the South Shore without a school resource officer. This ensures school safety. We have invested a lot of money in school safety technology and hardware, but a lot of your school, school safety issues come from within, not necessarily from without. And having a school resource officer onsite, spending their time primarily in the high school, but in all schools throughout the day, will ensure that our schools are places that are as safe as we possibly can make them. So the school budget that we put before the voters tonight will continue to ensure that the Situate Public Schools remain one of the best school systems on the South Shore, if not the whole state of Massachusetts. On behalf of our staff, our students, and our parents, I thank town meeting for the support you've shown to the schools over the last several years, and hope for that continued support going forward. An investment in education is the most important investment you can make for your, our children, for your community, and for our future, so I thank you for that.
From the advisory board, Chairman Curran.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Well, we're fortunate to have such great detail from Superintendent McCarthy and our town administrator Trish, so I'm not gonna reiterate everything that they've said. Um, but I will tell you that both of them have made the advisory board's life much easier this past year. Um, a much increased, um, collaborative effort between the schools and the town. It's wonderful to see that we have collectively come together to put together this $63 million budget. Please know that the advisory board met, questioned, and listened to every department head, from the town hall, to the police department, to the fire department, to sewer, water, and also the schools. Spent a lot of time and challenged, um, everyone who came before us, and I believe it's unanimous consensus that there was a lot of thought, and any additional personnel that was added, or any additional increases that have been added in these line items, were justified and are well thought out and warranted. The advisory committee unanimously recommends approval of the motion on the floor, seven to zero, to, to support the operating budget.
If you turn to page 29 of the advisory committee handout, you will find the operating budget set out in particular line items. What I'm going to do is, rather than going through each and every line item, I am going to just stick to the departmental overall item. For example, on page 29, uh, item 123, Board of Selectment Town Administrator. I won't go through the six items that are underneath. And I'll do that which, with each of these items. So, uh, if you want to discuss a particular item, please say "hold" in a loud voice, and we will hold it. At the end, uh, we will set aside everything that's held, it, for further discussion, and we will vote on everything that is not held. So that's the way we always do it, and that's the way we'll do it this year. So here we go. Item 123, Board of Selectment Town Administrator. Item 131, Advisory Committee. Item 132, Reserve Fund. Item 135, Finance Director Town Accountant. Item 141, Assessors. Item 145, Treasurer Collector. Item 149, Administration. Item 155, Information Technology. Item 158, Tax Foreclosures. Item 159, Cable TV. Item 161, Town Clerk. Item 171, Conservation. Item 175, Planning Board. Item 176, Zoning Board of Appeals. Item 182, Board of Selectment Economic Development. There is a hold on item 570, because that requires a two-thirds vote. Item 192, Property Liability Insurance. Item 210, Police. 220, Fire. 241, Inspections. 295, Shellfish. 300, School Committee. Hold on 300. 310, South Shore Regional School. 400, Public Works. Hold on 400. 410, Facilities. 423, Snow and Ice. 424, Streetlights and Beacons. 510, Board of Health. 541, Council on Aging. 543, Veterans Benefits Services. 549, Commission on Disabilities. 610, Library. 630, Recreation. 650, Beautification. 691, Historical Buildings. 720, Debt and Interest. 710, Non-Contributory Pensions. 911, Plymouth County Retirement. 912, Workers' Compensation. 913, Unemployment Insurance. 914, Contributory Group Insurance. 916, Federal Taxes. So there were a few, uh, whoever has their phone ringing, I'd appreciate it if you'd silence it. So the held items are, just to recap, 182, Board of Selectment Economic Development. Item 300, School Committee. Item 400, Public Works. And that is it. I'll accept a motion to approve all unheld items. It's been moved, seconded, uh, there being no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. All right.